Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council meeting of October 20th, 2016. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and I'll be presiding. For those folks at home trying to watch the stream, unfortunately, you're only hearing my voice. You'll be able to hear the audio, but you won't be able to witness the stunning reflections of our faces.
TV you can see.
TV you can see. If you're watching on television, on cable, you'll be fine and you won't understand what I'm talking about, but if you're trying to watch online, you'll be disappointed. But subsequent replays of the meeting will be the full visual/audio experience. Our usual custom is to open with public comment and giving the public an opportunity to speak and share their thoughts on any topic. And this evening, there appears to be no one here, so we won't invite anyone to do that, but that's what we usually do. So if you're predisposed at some point and you want to come to council meeting, you have an issue you want to discuss or share with the council or with the public at large, please feel free to come in and we'll tell you how it's done. So with that said, I'll ask the administrative assistant to call the roll, please.
Counselor Bidwell?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor White?
Here.
Counselor Klein?
Here.
Counselor LeBarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Here.
Counselor Sarah?
Here.
We have a quorum. We're all in our places with bright shiny faces and we have no public hearings scheduled tonight. Are there any announcements, minute announcements? To remind folks of the Veterans Day Parade, I'll be stepping off Lampert Field on the first of November, which is not that far away actually, and participants are asked to assemble, we'll step off at 11, right? The first?
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, isn't it, the first?
The first is Tuesday.
I'll have to look at the calendar. Anyone?
It says the 11th. 11, 11, 11.
No, I'm sorry, it is the 11th. I'm just looking at the first one, but that's right. Thank you. No, that's, it has always been, it's two was Armistice's Day, the 11th of November. So don't show up the first. That's like Donald Trump telling people to go vote on the 27th, so. No other announcements? Communications proclamations from the mayor? Crikey. Well, this is actually, and item number seven, we are postponing the presentation by the Mobility Group, and also, I would ask to remove the item from the consent agenda until the solicitor and others have a chance to vet what's being discussed, so we know where we are at, what authorities we have, basically to get more information. So that's postponed for this evening. So now, next, we move to the consent agenda, which has one item, and that's the item 16.181, it's the poll petition request, oh no, I'm sorry, it's to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Is there a motion? A motion, is there a second? There's a second? Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right.
Just for the record, we have a motion to remove this from the consent agenda.
Yes. Can we, Counselor O'Donnell?
I was going to say something, you're, you kind of requested of yourself that this be removed from the consent agenda, so it was, but now that it's off it, should we make a motion to postpone?
Yeah, that's what, for procedural process.
All right, so I move to postpone the poll petition request to the next regular meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of removing item 16.181, the poll petition request from Mobility LLC, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Now we recess for finance, and I ask the gavel over Counselor Murphy, so we can preside over the finance.
So Pam, would you call the roll of finance, please?
704, this is a record.
I, this is a-
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor LeBarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here. So I need to point out that I have surprisingly little on my desk here.
Oh. Well, it's going to be a really quick meeting, then.
Could be a really quick meeting, but I think it's probably somewhere. So if we'll play the Jeopardy music for a moment, we'll get the agenda for-
Yeah, I know. It's a left-handed.
This is going to be expensive.
There we go.
I've got to slow down the meeting somehow.
Okay, we're ready to go. We need approval of the minutes of October 6th, 16. Do we have a motion on those?
Move to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to financial orders.
Oh, you're going to, oh, yeah.
Yep, so financial orders. And this is 16177, to approve the, for transfer appropriations from fiscal year 17 CPA funds, so we're going to do some CPA stuff tonight, upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, order that the following amounts be appropriated, mayor's moving into position, from the fiscal 2017 Community Preservation Fund, estimated reserves of $1,457,000 for fiscal 2017 Community Preservation purposes. $160,000 from estimated CPA, Community Preservation, Open Fund Reserves for, well, actually, I think they're all in here, for, actually, very little detail on these things in this, do you have the actual?
That's not-
What is it?
For the CPA transfer.
The CPA stuff? I've got the highlights of them, but I don't have the actual details of them.
That's it. That's it. That's all that came.
Really?
That's the whole order.
Sarah's here.
Good.
Categories.
Money in the categories. Okay, well, there's not a lot of detail here, but, so we're going to put $160,000 in '17 to the CPA Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve, $160,000 from 2017 Estimated Funds for Historic Preservation, $160,000 from 2017 Funds for Affordable Housing, $60,000 in '17 Funds for Community Preservation Administrative Account, and $970,000 from the 2017 CPA Reserves for the Budgeted Reserve. Also, the following amounts will be appropriated from Community Preservation Fund's Budgeted Reserve for the FY '16 Community Preservation Bonding Payments, those are things we've already done, $65,000 for principal and $15,075 for interest on the Bean Farm Account, $95,000 for principal and $36,000 for interest on the Florence Fields Bond, $270,000 for principal and $31,380, or $68.33 for interest for the Pulaski Park Bond. And Sarah, do you want to talk to us about these things?
So this is the annual activity of Community Preservation Committee in the City Council every year. The Community Preservation Act requires that we either spend or set aside expenses for our annual revenue in old space, community housing, and historic preservation, so this order does that, is the remainder in our budget reserve, which is open spending for type of project, and it also pays our rent from, if there was a bridge. So it's not actually spending any money, it's just setting it aside in those designated accounts.
Questions for Sarah?
I just wanted to add that there's a request for two weeks on that this evening, and the purpose is because we're trying to get this activity completed along with one of the other votes we'll be taking tonight, in order to send our material to the OR, except the tax rate, and this is one of the required pieces of that puzzle that we need to have done, so we're hoping to get that done by the end of October, there's no spending at all, so we're just hoping we can get it two weeks to that.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor.
I just had a question about the estimated $300,000 state match. How does that process work? When, when do we really know what it is?
Now that we finalize in November, and in the event that it's vastly different from what we estimated, we may have to come back and adjust it. But because this is done somewhere in the year, the match is included, it don't, usually in November, sometimes for other people.
Very good. Any other questions in finance? Anyone in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next is 16179, in order to appropriate $3,000 for the Gare Collection. I don't appear to have any detail on that one either, so. Anyone want to speak to the Gare Collection? Thank you, because I don't have a packet over here. So, order that whereas Historic Northampton Inc. submitted a small grants application for community preservation funding to purchase small climate-controlled museum collection shelving units to properly store and display the Gare Collection, whereas the Gare Collection is a collection of 528 silversmithing and clock tools and accounting books accumulated by the prominent Northampton business, who has operated continuously on Main Street from 1785 to 1984, and whereas CPA funds will be used to help secure important historic resources that tell the 298-year history of a business in the community that has received public support, whereas Historic Northampton has received matching funds from private donations, and whereas on September 21st, 2016, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $3,000 in Community Preservation Funds be used to support the project, and therefore be ordered that $3,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to Historic Northampton Inc. to purchase and install museum shelving to house the Gare Collection, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically that $3,000 is appropriated from CPA Historic Preservation Reserve account. We got a motion of finance? Motion of finance?
Oh, so moved.
Second? All right. Comment?
Mr. Pam thinks it's attached to that. This letter, so it's-
Perfect.
This is the-
Oh, there we go. Okay. Questions?
Really quick interpretation of our, the following were, they either come in forward as part of the small grants process, and the committee developed these so that applicants with small, discreet projects could come in and reflect smaller, and the next two slides show some of the details about the Gare Collection. It has 528 silversmithing and watch repair tools, I guess, a lot of things in the business for two centuries, hundred book books, and it operated on Main Street from just after the revolution until 1984, and Historic Northampton came in with this application because they want to make sure that all of these important artifacts are preserved and displayed in appropriate climate-controlled using and quality shelving. Now they're in museum clocks, they're not available for public display, and that didn't seem fit for the importance of this collection. So this shows a long-handled silversmith marker tool with a smith's name mark, and the next slide shows a wicked trimmer and average. Pretty small enough for a large protection.
Questions from anyone? Counselor?
I think this is wonderful for the city of Northampton. I've known the Gare family for a long time, and Alice, I used to hang around with her, and I think it's wonderful, that $3,000, we can't go wrong with that.
Any other questions? Just a comment, there's a cover letter actually from the chair to me, talking about what Sarah just described, which is essentially establishing these $3,000 fast-track grants, basically, allowing them to, so rather than wait for the regular funding cycle, make the funding available for $3,000, is that the cap?
Yeah, it's $3,000 CPA or maximum.
And so as they, as they come up, we'll be getting them throughout, as they come up, as opposed to waiting for the regular funding cycle?
These come in twice a year and they fund us as a regular application, so those have much longer time, so I'll be back in one year in December.
Counselor?
Yes. Can you, how long are these shelves good for?
I don't have specific details about the shelves, but they are museum quality, and they're good for decades.
Quite a while.
Any other, Counselor?
I'm just wondering, do you find the community knows about the small grant program to the extent they should, and how many applications did you get this year?
We only had two this year.
Only two?
And I had discussions with some other people, and we're thinking about it, and they turned out either not to be ready or it was for things that weren't eligible. We do try and get the word out, but then there's no, you know, or other people.
I thought I remember in the past, there were more small grants made annually, maybe I'm just making that up, I don't know.
This is our third round, we haven't, we haven't gotten to many, we hope to get back.
Really? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor?
I'm just curious, is the Historic Preservation Silo of Funds, I assume it is, just defined broadly enough to include not obviously just buildings, but a means to protect collections?
Yeah, it's documents and artifacts.
That's specifically in there?
Much, much of it.
I didn't realize that, okay.
We funded the Northampton, but in the past, it's just because of the city's vital records.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this one in finance? Seeing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The next is 16180, in order to appropriate $3,000 for the preservation of the Pro Brush Collection, order that whereas Historic Northampton Inc. submitted a small grant application for Community Preservation Act funding to purchase climate-controlled museum collection shelving units to properly store and display the Pro Brush Collection, whereas the Pro Brush Collection is a collection of de Gare types and photographs and products and company records, advertising and manufacturing tools, and whereas Historic Northampton has raised 1.1 matching funds from private donations, and whereas CPA funds will be used to help secure important historic resources that played an important role in the history of Northampton manufacturing in Florence, and the history of photography and abolitionism in Northampton, and whereas on September 21st, 2016, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $3,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project, now therefore be ordered that $3,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund to Historic Northampton Inc. to purchase and install museum shelving units to house the Pro Brush Collection, and that grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee and the mayor and city council, specifically that $3,000 is appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve. We have a motion.
Second?
All right, so two quick slides on this one, the first one, two kids in a sale about Pro Brush, and we have been on Pro Brush, it was a staple in Florence for many years, and it played former slaves prior to the Civil War, so Northampton's progressive even then, the collection includes scrapbooks, and then photographs, and all of the things that Pro Brush made over the years, including de Gare-type cases, dinnerware, manufacturing tools, and brushes, of course, and there's a new little ad that I found that the Florence prophylactic brush is made in a little New England town in a clean area fractured under scientific sanitary conditions, and the next slide shows some examples of the items in the Pro Brush Collection.
Any questions for Sarah? Any for brush collection? No questions? Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. The next is 16186, in order to authorize budgetary transfers to workers' comp insurance. An order?
Miss 185.
For insurance transfers, we're going to do general liability insurance, we're going to do $66,000 transfer from employee liability, and a $3507 transfer from police fire accident insurance, and we're going to put the $69,507 to workers' compensation.
Did we skip one?
Yes, we skipped one.
Second?
Second.
Susan?
Just within the same budget, just moving money from one category to another, when Maya sends us our bills, they give us credits, and they apply the, the credits to the bills, so the credits just ended up in the same, so these are the different transfers.
Questions? All in favor of a positive recommendation in finance?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, now we're back to parking fee, 16185, order to suspend certain parking fees for certain dates in 2016, order that on the following day, collections of fees for on-street and off-street parking spaces excluding the Gare parking garage be suspended Friday, November 25th, 16, which is called Black Friday, Saturday, November 26th, which is Small Business Saturday, Saturday, December 24th, which is Christmas Eve, and Saturday, December 31st, which is First Night New Year's Eve. Motion?
Make a motion.
Second? And the mayor's here to talk about it.
Yeah, this is sort of a single order to ask for authorization to suspend full collection of fees, primarily, obviously downtown Northampton, or most likely regulated parties on these four particular days, been having conversations with the business community and the Downtown Northampton Association. There'd been in the past, decade ago plus, there had been some free parking offered during the holiday season. We have had a tradition to free parking on around First Night, and so I was trying to accommodate that request by selecting some of the key shopping areas in downtown, and also, obviously, First Night, which is one of the try to welcome a lot of people into the city, to enjoy First Night activities, which begin around 10:00 AM in the morning. So, so this is where we suspend, let me keep some things for the, for the caller.
Questions for the mayor and county? Hearing none? All in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. The next is 16187, in order to impose a lien for cross-connection charges and fees that have not been paid by a due date, whereas in order to ensure that all potable water throughout the city of Northampton, water supply system is free from any potential outside contamination by regulation of the Department of Environmental Protection, the city is required to have an approved program that surveys all potential cross-connection sites and tests all devices. Double-check valves devices are tested annually to reduce pressure zone devices and are tested semi-annually. All commercial, industrial, and agricultural buildings must be re-surveyed every 10 years for cross-connections. Whereas the Stephen Northampton Hills landowners for a fee and charges associated with the cross-connection program, including an initial application and approval fee of $65, an annual fee based upon the devices owned and tested, and whereas Mass. General Law 40, subsection 58, provides that any city or town may impose a lien on real property located within the city or town for any local charge or fee that has not been paid by its due date. Said lien shall be known as municipal charges, provided that a separate vote at a town meeting or by a city or town council is taken for each type of charge or fee, and whereas the city of Northampton cannot presently lien property for unpaid cross-connection fees, and whereas the city desires to include cross-connection fee charges in its municipal lien program, now therefore be ordered that in accordance with Mass. General Law 40, subsection 58, charges and fees for cross-connections shall be included as a municipal charges lien, and the city may impose a lien on real property located within the city for cross-connection charges and fees that have not been paid by the due date. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, and Susan's going to talk to us about this.
Well, it's laid it out pretty well. It's a program that the DPDW does, they have to go to various locations in the city to make sure that the cross-connection valves are doing their job, and we build for that service, and people don't always pay their bills, so we, in those cases, we would like to have the ability to put a lien on the property, just like we would lien an outstanding water or sewer bill, we'll be able to lien the cross-connection fee, because it's a property, real estate property, particular charge, we can lien it on that property, so if that property sells, we can attach, we can get our money back.
Questions, Counselor?
Yes, so, I'm having a problem with this. We don't have a lien on properties now, correct? You're not doing this. This is something new?
No, property, right now, if a property owner did not pay their real estate taxes, we would be putting a lien on their property.
Right, but this is different.
Right, if they did not pay their water bill or their sewer bill, now we're adding the cross-connection as another charge that could be leaned on, on the real estate bill.
So, but without the charge, you can still go ahead and put a lien on it, right? No?
But not on a cross-connection fee. Without taking this vote, we can't put a lien on the cross-connection.
Okay, I got you now.
If, if, if property owners chose not to pay, this is very difficult to get them to pay it, so this is, this is a method to use to recoup that cost.
How many properties do we have that are under this?
I don't know. I can back down.
And, well, I can't give you an exact number, but I know that it's a pretty small percentage of them are residential.
Okay.
It tends to be primarily commercial that have this cross-connection valve that basically we're trying to prevent backflow into the water supply of sewer or other stuff into the water supply.
Sounds like it's a lot of sprinklers and things like that.
Primarily people who have sprinkler systems, large commercial.
I got you.
It's primarily those.
Okay.
And this is a requirement the state, we're supposed to inspect them and make sure they're functioning, and so primarily would be the handful of residences in Northampton that have a residential sprinkler system, we don't have many of them, so.
Okay, I was kind of worried when I saw agricultural on there, like farmers and that.
No, a lot of the large commercial properties that have active charged systems, if water pressure's lost, you know what, water that's been sitting in a commercial sprinkler system for two years to like feed back into the water supply and then get pumped into somebody's house, so.
Okay.
Any other questions in finance for this Counselor?
Just curious how widespread a problem this is, the collections problem.
I don't see it as a terrible problem, but we are trying to tighten up on the collection of outstanding, these are fines, et cetera, to the city, so it's something that we've been talking with our independent auditor about doing, so we're trying to tighten up things, so this is one way to recoup that cost, because it is a property-specific charge.
Any other questions in finance? Then in finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm only looking for one reading on this.
Okay.
Next is 16188, in order to approve gift of labor and materials for the Bridge Street School Library, order that the Northampton City Council gratefully accepts the donation of labor and materials valued up to $100,000, a gift to the city of Northampton from It Takes a Community Foundation, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, approves using gifted funds as requested by the donor for the reservation of the Bridge Street School Elementary Library. Motion of finance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Comment from the mayor, the, it's a good thing to fix the library.
Apologize.
No problem.
Or cross-connection.
Okay.
So, this is actually a matter that we discussed, actually, at the school committee meeting last Thursday, initially, well, Principal Shokat and the PTO and a number of community members in the Bridge Street community have been working on a really exciting sort of library renovation project for the Bridge Street School Library, and they received a grant from It Takes a Community Foundation of $100,000. So, city, the school committee approved it, approved the project, we saw some of the work that they're going to do, we then found out after that vote that there's a deadline on the, on that funding being dispersed, and so rather than have it become a cash gift, that the gift would be instead in labor and services, that they would pay for some of the labor and services, and we're talking about replacing flooring, you know- And we're talking about replacing flooring, replacing shelving, some construction work within the actual library. That will be, you know, supervised by central services and the school department, but it will be funded directly by this foundation. So, so because of that, and because we have, NPS has a fifty thousand dollar limit on gifts that it can accept, it triggered that limit, so we have to come to you to have this vote to accept any kind of gift other than money over fifty thousand dollars. So we're asking for your approval under Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, to accept these, this donation of labor and materials.
Questions for the mayor and finance?
You want two reading?
We would like two readings because again, there's a December thirty-first deadline to expend this, and so they need to, they would like to get going, get contact, they should have worked on this way some of the first. I believe it's a calendar year, man, for that. So initially, they thought they were going to just get a grant check in the beginning, and then there was some continuing, it had to be spent by the end of the year.
Counselor, you have a question?
Having just spent a lot of time in the library yesterday for open house night, I can say it's very much needed, this work, which is fantastic and very exciting. But, so this money needs to be spent before the end of the year, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the work needs to be done by the end of the year. That's what we're working on.
So is there a plan for?
There is a plan, and there's been a committee working on it. Principal Shokat's been working on it. There's, I believe, a member of the school committee, school community, who is an architect, who's put together, for those of you who have been following the Jackson Street project, it's very similar to that, kind of a grassroots effort, and they're also going to be doing some fundraising as well. This isn't all of the work, but this is some of the work that's going to be done. I didn't, again, Principal Shokat, the school committee made a presentation, the school committee, I didn't bring a copy of that because I wasn't asking you to approve the redesign, but just the actual.
The transfer.
But you can check the per. It's, you know, they're trying to make it more user-friendly, more places for kids to sit and read, and some maker space, and, you know, the kinds of stuff that modern libraries have, technology, better shelving, lighting, flooring, all those kinds of things, yeah.
That's great.
And they're also working on their collection, I believe. I think the average age of the book collection is, you know, nineteen seventy or something else, so it's early mid-seventies is the average age, so there's also support. It's going to require other fundraising, I think that's going to happen, the PTO is obviously involved, so.
Counselor, do you have a question for the mayor?
Yeah, forgive me if you've already mentioned this. Do you know who the It Takes a Community Foundation is?
Yeah, it's actually, he's the lead singer of Sting.
Aaron Lewis.
Lewis, yes. Louis is the, is the person that, it's his foundation, and actually, a Bridge Street parent, as it turns out, is the president of the board of that foundation, Tim Van Eppes, who's also the.
Sandry Oil.
Sandry Oil, and lives in North Hampton, is a North Hampton resident, is also.
Lives on Union Street.
Lives on Union Street, yes. And so, so yes, so that, that's, yeah, I hadn't heard of the foundation either, but that is the, the foundation, yeah. And they support community initiatives in education and then youth programs.
No, no, anyone else? Counselor Bidwell?
That was my question too, just curious about the foundation.
Okay, any other questions for, for the mayor on this one? Seems like a good thing, all in favor of a positive recommendation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The next is sixteen one eight-nine. In order to approve gift funding expenditure at the senior center for, we'll give a report. Order that the following expenditure from the senior center gift fund be approved, six thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars for thirteen desktop computers for use by seniors at the senior center computer room. A motion to finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Okay, anyone have questions for the mayor on this one? Counselor?
How old are the computers, mayor, that are in the computer room now?
Pretty certain they're original to when the center first opened. So that, we're going on, you know, six or seven years now, which as we know in computer years, that's, you know, significant. So this would, this would, this upgrades that, that computer room, which gets a lot of use, to new, you know, I think they're HP desktops with, you know, bigger monitors and for that space, which gets a lot of use for training, and seniors can use it. So, and this is coming out of the revolving gift fund for the senior center.
And we have, I think, what, two instructors?
Yeah.
And I've heard excellent, excellent things about how people are going there for quite a long time and are so pleased of learning how to run the computers. And I know, I've heard myself, that the computers were just not operable.
They were getting a little slow, that's correct.
Exactly.
Yeah, they were, so this is a great upgrade, and obviously we appreciate all the many people who make gifts to the senior center, businesses' funds that are coming out of the gift fund, to be able to pay for that, so.
Are there like colleges, like Smith College, or maybe Amherst College, University of Mass, where sometimes, which I do know, like they get rid of their computers, or they donate them?
Yeah, we actually, last Thursday, at the school committee, we accepted several donated computers. They tend to be used computers, and from Smith, they tend to be IMAX, and so those we've been using in our tech lab at NCTV and the tech one, and we have IMAX in the high school, so they work really well in that application.
Okay.
I know the senior center has tended to use Windows-based computers, and so typically, those are typically the ones that Smith donates. I don't know about UMass, but I know that Smith makes donations from time to time to the school.
Other questions for the mayor?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? So the next thing is Susan, and an update, quarterly update on our financials.
So I'm just going to be talking about two quarterly reports tonight. The quarterly report for fiscal twenty sixteen, which ends in twenty thirteen, so this is the fourth quarter of that year, and then I have the first quarter of twenty seventeen, which is only three months, so there's not as much to talk about. But, okay, so you could get this all as a document with your packet, but I thought I'd give you a handout so you can get it. There are two sections we're going to look at, first, the general fund, and then revenues and expenditures, and second, we'll look at the uncharged funds, and again, revenues and expenditures. I'm just going to point out some highlights from the year that ended. If you look at the first page, we have the revenues from, beginning with the revenues from the general fund, first section is. Okay, a highlight this year, the motor vehicle excise, this year is about two point six nine million, that's the highest, but my hand is ever having a motor vehicle. I think this one out because it is, it is driven by the economy, so it's a number that can change from year to year. It's been, in the last few years, it's been as low as two point two, and this is pretty high, almost two point, almost two point seven. Last year it was two point five, so it's about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars above last year, so that was, that was a good number for us. I'd like to point out hotel motel tax and the meals tax, together, those two are a hundred forty thousand dollars above fifteen twenty fifteen. The hotel hotel was eighty-two thousand over last year, and meals was sixty-five thousand dollars over the year last year. And that is after a couple of years of fees being somewhat flat. They were pretty much the same for year to year for about two or three years. So this is nice to see some growth, particularly in these, because again, these are, these are indicators that are driven by the economy. If you look at the next section where it talks about charges for services, you'll see the parking revenues all brought in what was estimated. What you don't see is the additional parking revenue that came in, because once parking revenues reach what we estimate, everything else goes over into the receipt reserve for parking, and that's how we pay for these capital increases to the parking system. Just as a highlight though, parking revenue was forty-two thousand dollars above twenty fifteen overall, so that was another good thing for us. On the next page, at the top of the page, you'll see ambulance services. Last year, the ambulance brought in one point five five million, this year, one point six three, that's a growth of seventy-four thousand dollars in ambulance revenue. Again, I'm not sure that's a good thing, a lot of people are riding in the ambulance, but for us, as far as revenue, that was an unexpected increase. If you look down in the section called licenses and permits, this is, there's a section where you'll see building inspector, plumbing, wiring, weights and measures, and periodic inspections. Again, these are economically-driven factors, there was a lot of filming activity. Our fees this year brought in eighty thousand dollars more than they did in twenty fifteen, so that was another good thing. If you look in the next section for federal revenue, Medicare reimbursement from the schools, the schools apply for Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement for students that receive Medicaid eligible services in our schools, and last year, we, they brought in three hundred seventy-five thousand, this year, four hundred and eighty-seven, so again, a growth of about a hundred and ten thousand. If you flip to the last page, which is page five, you can see in the end, the revenues were one point three seven seven million over estimates, they came in at one hundred and one point six. Last year, our revenues were one hundred and one point three, so a little bit more, about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars overall, more in revenues than, than last year, above our estimates. Again, revenues are up like two million over last year, about two, the growth was about three hundred and thirty-five thousand. And the amount of uncollected taxes, if you go back to page one, the first two lines where it says TP tax revenue, that's personal property, and RE is real estate, you can see, we did not collect twenty-three thousand in personal property and four hundred and fifty in real estate, that's, but we did collect ninety-nine point one percent of our revenues, so we have a very good collection rate, and this is not money that will be lost to us, this is money that we lien and we get back through tax title.
And we get sixty percent interest on that stuff? It's like the gift that keeps on giving?
Right.
Yeah.
So, so if you go to the next page after the revenues, you'll see the expenses for the general fund, and this section excludes the schools. There's not a lot to talk about here, where you see surpluses under the last column where it says available budget. A lot of the surpluses tend to be in salary line items, and that's generally a factor of there being vacancies. So, and the larger the department, sometimes the larger the number. So if you flip through, and you get to the third page, one of the largest turnbacks in unspent funds was in the police department. They had about five hundred and three thousand of unspent in salaries, and that's primarily, that is driven by vacancies and the fine that it takes to fill vacancies in the police department. And if you flip to the next page, which would be page four of this, you'll see the fire department similarly had about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars returned in sales, again, a factor of vacancies. Also in the treasurer and the collector line items, as you know, the treasurer and collector were combined at the beginning of FY sixteen, but in the budget for sixteen, we had anticipated two separate departments. We didn't know we were going to be moving in that direction. So there's surplus there because that consolidation eliminated one and a half positions, so there was extra salary there as well. The next one, next page, page five, you can see snow and ice. Again, we were very fortunate that it was, this is the lowest amount in the last four years that we've spent. This was forty-two percent of what we spent in twenty fifteen. We spent over nine hundred thousand on snow and ice, and this year, we spent three hundred and ninety-eight, so that was, that was another factor helping us this year. If you look on page six, you'll see a surplus in veterans benefits. While veterans benefits that were paid out were slightly higher than last year, about forty thousand more than fiscal fifteen, it was below our three-year average, and I budgeted for a rolling.
But reimbursements catch up.
Right, and reimbursements catch up, so. So there's a small turnback there. If you look on page seven, down towards the bottom, line seven fifty, interest on debt, had a savings of forty thousand, that was a direct result of the refunding that we did, or the refinancing of bonds that we did in December twenty fifteen. If you flip to the next page, which is page eight, about halfway down the page, you'll see medical insurance, and you'll see that there was a turnback of almost two hundred and fifty thousand. Again, when there are vacancies.
You don't.
We don't spend on health insurance, so that is why there's a surplus there. So if you get to the last page, which is page nine, oh, one other thing, cherry sheet assessments, which is the top of page nine, you can see we had a surplus of two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Cherry sheet assessments are basically school choice, outgoing tuition, and charge school outgoing tuition. We paid slightly more than we estimated in outgoing school choice, but we paid slight, about two hundred thousand less in outgoing charter. It's still a really, really big number, but the state knows this estimate, and then they give, then they charge us for the actuals. There have been years where the actuals have been more than what we anticipated, so fortunately this year, there was some money left over there. So if you get to the bottom, you can see that we spent ninety-six point three percent of our budget, last year, we spent ninety-seven percent, so this year, return to our, you know, turnbacks were about five hundred thousand dollars more than last year. So overall, this is how we generate free cash. When revenues are higher than estimated and expenditures are lower than estimated, that's how free cash is generated. So we anticipate that these numbers that are, will have a fairly healthy free cash number, it'll be about the same as prior years, somewhere between three and four percent of our total.
What are you thinking, December? Before December, we'll get that certified?
Probably, although Department of Revenue has lost so many staff, they're prioritizing setting tax rates before doing free cash, so it could be.
But before the end of the year, you think we'll get it?
Yeah, it could be January, if we see what, we'll know the number, we just won't get it certified.
We won't get it certified and delivered.
You mentioned that that's why you're trying to turn in the tax rate earlier.
Quickly.
Right.
The sooner we get a tax rate done. The sooner we get in the queue to get our free cash.
Then we get our free cash, and, and once free cash is certified, then we'll, we'll come to you with.
We can free up that, that money.
With that, it's a stabilization fund, so. So the next report in this, still in fiscal twenty sixteen, is the school department. School department is also in the general fund, we have two school departments, as you know. The first one here is North Hampton Public Schools, so if you go to page two, you'll see they turned back twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-one. That was a product of unspent encumbrances, at the end of FY fifteen, they encumbered un, they encumbered bills that had been outstanding, that hadn't come in yet, they didn't spend all of that, so that's why that is being really planned to be. And the same with Smith Vote, which is the next two pages, they ended up turning back nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. With Smith Vote, when they turn back money, we end up having to give it back to them because we have to need less to spend. So when we get, when their end-of-the-year report gets served by the Department of Ed is going to tell us, and you need to give it back.
But that primarily is because you budget them really accurately upfront, so if they turn it back, they're due that money anyway.
Right, these were, these were incumbences that they also encumbered at the end of fifteen but didn't spend, so. All right, so moving on to the enterprise funds, which are the next page, there, as you know, are four enterprise funds, and this first page is simply the revenue from each of the enterprise funds. Both the sewer and water enterprise funds, both brought in about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in revenue than they did the year before. Is directly correlated with the use of water, so water use, quantity of water use was down, and since sewer use is based on the amount of water use, the, it's almost identical.
Yeah, but the last two years, we've had water restrictions, correct? So people couldn't use water, they may have otherwise wanted to.
Right, right. So, you know, there is some, which is one reason we want to keep healthy, you know, free cash or, you know, undesignedated fund down.
To make up that.
In those. If you turn to the next one, stormwater. If you turn to the next one, stormwater, that brought in a little bit more than we had budgeted, but if you remember, 2015 was the first year of the stormwater enterprise fund. So there was a lag in collections. So we're now starting to get to the point where all of the collections of the year is coming in.
Because we were trying to target 2 million, but we went over because of the previous year.
Right, that was money that came in from prior, prior year.
Counsel, do you have a question?
Yes. I have received some calls, Susan, from residents and people in the city, asking, well, we've had a water restriction, so why are they paying for a stormwater utility fee? I can't answer it.
Yeah, the way this, well, the way the stormwater utility fee is written, the way it's designed, the way it's implemented, is that it's a charge, fixed monthly charge based on the impervious, impervious surface versus the water in sewer, which is.
Use.
On water consumption. So, so we don't have, there's not currently a provision in the, I'm not sure how you would measure it, but not currently in the stormwater fee, a provision.
For lack of rain.
I suppose, yeah. That's not currently in the syst, in the current system. So that's the best explanation I can give.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then the last revenue source is the solid waste enterprise fund, and its revenues were basically the same as 2015, 540,000, year before, 547,000. So, so if you flip the next page, you'll see the expenditures in each of these funds. And you can see sewer enterprise funds, 93.8, water, 96.7% of their total, stormwater, 92.7, and solid waste, 95.2. So again, these funds, when their revenues exceed estimates and their expenditures are less than we thought, they generate their own free cash, and that's the money that is retained in each one of those individual funds. So the free cash generated by solid waste stays with solid waste, and likewise.
Excellent. Questions for Susan on the report?
No.
Counselor.
Within the school department, unlike fire and police, where you expected this vacancies to translate into, you know, 92% and 93%, it was virtually 100% for personnel. Is that because there are, basically there are?
Yeah, she's going to put on her school business.
I'm going to be sorry I asked the question? No, no.
No, there's lots, there's lots of vacancies in the school department, and they end up moving their money around throughout the year, you know, when there's, but with them, when there's vacancies, they have to bring in subs. So there may be lines that have, haven't been spent for English teachers, but then sub-lines get off. In general, though, schools generally do have PS that end up using for OL, and that's.
Transfers.
Yeah.
But they're allowed to do that.
They're allowed to do that, and, and since I came to North Hampton, which was in 2004, North Hampton, unlike many other communities, always tells the school departments, manager and everybody else, that is really, it's not typical in other communities. They try to get the school department to give it back. And I think what's been great in North Hampton is that we say, we know you have needs, and maybe you're not going to need it all for personnel, but you certainly can use it to buy books all the way up. So I think it's been, I think it's been really, I don't know, I know our new business manager is kind of surprised by that. He came and made, wow, that does get money. We want to see it.
But the other thing, see, that wasn't the answer I thought you were going to give, but that's okay. But the other piece is that they have school choice money, and so they're, they're also trying to spend all of the appropriation first because school choice, they keep as sort of their reserve.
It's like their free cash.
So they're going to spend every appropriation dollar before they touch any of the school choice dollars, because the school choice dollars gets retained.
Right.
Correct, as a, as a, that's just another, one of the other reasons why. I was thinking when I saw that, $9,000, but, but it is true, we do not request that they give that turnback to the end of the year.
Any more questions in finance?
So, so all those internal transfers within, within school, those come before school clear, or that just happens at the discretion of the administration?
They come before the school committee, yeah.
Good, thank you. Any more questions in finance?
No.
That's all on our agenda.
No, no, you got 2015.
That's right, you have another report.
There really is nothing to talk about with 2017. Everything is going as expected. It's only been three months, but I'm not seeing any, you know, alarming trends. So there really is not a whole lot to talk about. Is that, is that good? Or would you like me to talk about some?
Can I just actually note that I just got a text from someone saying the microphone at the podium is not working, Jen, I guess, or it's not broadcasting, just a heads up. Counsel Murphy stepped out for a second, so I'll, I can, does anyone have any questions?
Do I just read the bottom lines, or?
Yep, at this point, revenues right now are about 22%, so 25% through the year. Expenditures, there goes the last page of the general fund, about 30%, which is fine because there are a lot of things that we pay right up front. We pay all our internal policies, et cetera, right from the beginning of the year. If you look at the enterprise funds, sewers at 23, 23% for revenue, waters 25.8, stormwater 24.4, and solid waste 24.9, exactly where we expected to be, one quarter of the way through. And, and for expenditures, sewers at 7.7, water 19, stormwater 5, and solid waste 9. That's not unusual because they have a lot of large ticket construction and equipment purchases, and those may not, those happen at variable times of the year, so.
I know it's a pretty healthy hotel and motel and meals tax numbers for the first quarter. How, is that, is that seasonality that we usually see in, in, in the first quarter, or is there anything more going on than, than seasonality?
No, these are, various quarters have different trends, and we keep it public on what each quarter is so we can compare other quarters. So these are about close to where we usually are for that.
Okay. Can you reflect, I mean, we, we've obviously lost the Clarion because it's off the face of the year, and we added the Marriott. Can you get a feel for what, how that's going to shake out?
Well, the last week, we had an increase in hotel of 83,000. I'm not entirely sure when the Clarion came offline, and we would have stopped getting taxed.
It was like last fall, I think. It was like.
In the last.
So I would say, if, if, you know, while it is a loss to us, there's no question.
The other problem too is that the state, the state numbers they give us are, are behind a little bit as well. The collections take a while, so Terry's been trying to figure that out, like, because the, the actual collections, there's a lag time between when the collections are done to when we get them.
Right, so we, these payments for 2017, we got the first week of October. Do those actually reflect July, August, September, or do they reflect May, June, and July? That's one of those pieces that Terry is going to figure out.
So it remains to be seen what the impact of the Clarion going away will be. All right, other questions on this one?
Overall, as you say, this is a reflection of, of a burgeoning economy, and particularly a local burgeoning economy, although, you know, meals taxes and hotel taxes may also reflect increased fees or rates, and, whereas the parking revenues are the ones that I think are more of a witness test in some sense, because the rates have not changed, which may be changing soon enough, but they have not changed insofar, but we are now seeing clearly there's, we're, either people are being more conscientious in paying, or we're catching more people, or point in fact, actually, there are more people coming to North Hampton and parking for whatever reason, more presumed to do business. So is it your sense that, that actually, as, there are clearly pressures that were identified in review, your, in the subcommittee, there are pressures being realized by a lot of retailers in downtown North Hampton, but one of the things is that the foot traffic is still not only stable, but it's increasing, and foot traffic, I would say, is reflected by the parking, which it might be a leap, but.
The parking numbers gave you denying the tickets, because that was just revenue.
Right, that's just revenue from popping coins in the meter.
Right. You know, part of the increase from '15 to '16 is due to the weather as well, because '15 was down because a lot of people, there was no place to park, because there was no piles, and, so, you know, part of that. But I would say, you know, overall, I've kept a history of the parking revenue for multiple years, and it's, and it's stable, and I, and this year, we did see increases. I think the other three quarters that I reported to you showed that they had increases over the prior year. But again, I think we need a little bit longer term trend to look at because of the, you know, the bad winter that we had in '15. And it was interesting, in '15, the garage revenue was up, because whenever there was a snow event, people would move their cars into the garage.
But the last quarter you reported, you were about 12% above or so from previous, previous year. Clearly, there weren't snow events in either case during those periods, so that they, they would be roughly comparable, I would assume.
I think, you know, I think overall, it's a very, it's a very positive.
You all have an estimate, you know, we're updating our machines to take debit credit cards. What do you suspect will be the impact on parking revenue when we add that flexibility?
Oh, well. Well, when you did the garage. The garage, I think, we've seen the revenue growing in the garage, because it's much more convenient. We do have to offset that with the cost, because using debit cards and credit cards, I believe the cost has been in the $20,000 range for the garage to have, to have the convenience of that. And about, I would say it's about 60% of the people in the reports that I see are using credit and debit cards, and 40% are still using cash, which kind of surprised me, that it can go faster to 100%, but I think it's moving in that direction.
Challenges, though, you know, for two-hour parking trip, which is sort of our most popular option.
Yeah.
That's 50 cents, and the credit card company takes.
They take, there's three tiers to the fee that they take. There's the, the fee for the actual Visa or MasterCard, and then there's the bank fee. So if you have TD Bank Visa or a Bank of America Visa, those fees are also different. And then there's another fee on top, and some are fixed and some are a percentage. So often with a two-hour trip, the fee is quite high. So until, when the trip gets to be three and four hours, the percentage of the fee is much lower.
Once you find in the garage, do people tend to buy bonus time? Or the garage, no, because they pay when they leave? But it'd be interesting to see at the kiosk in the street if they buy extra time just to be safe.
That is an option, that will, that is always an option on the credit card.
To, to buy a little extra time and to be safe.
You have max time button, just allows you to push two hours, and so, you know, our parking's relatively inexpensive, and so you might find more people doing that, I don't know.
But we won't know until we switch over and see how that shakes out. Okay. Questions on parking for the, for Susan? All right, and this isn't an action item, this was just a report. All right. Back to business, I don't see any. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we moved back into regular session. And just another announcement, I've got a report about the podium mic. Unfortunately, when they were making adjustments for the flu clinic, the, and Jen won't be able to fix the, this without getting under the podium. So when people speak at the podium, they could speak loudly, or maybe, you just holler loudly. And in fact, actually, when we come up to some items, it might be appropriate to grant the mayor one of these desk mics or something. Hmm? He can have, he can have Pams. Okay, would that work, Jen, do you think? We'll find out.
Does it reach?
All right, here we go. So the first financial order, of course, is to approve the appropriations for the recommended CPC small grants project. And, and I don't know if you want to move them as a group?
I'll move them as a group.
I think we should. Move them as a group.
Okay, as a group, this is six, item 16.179 and item 16.180. This 16.179 is an order to appropriate the $3,000 for the Gare collection, and then item 16.180 is an order to appropriate $3,000 for the Pro Brush collection. Any further discussion on these?
And it's also just putting the money aside in the, in the reserve accounts. Right, it's three items.
Yes, that's what I understood, and.
Okay, just, thank you.
It's two items.
And the, the two items.
And the separation. The one you're thinking about is a separate order.
Isn't there one order for?
Oh, you're, you're talking about, you're talking about setting the silos or something with the designated funding streams. This is, this is the small grants.
Two of them.
Yeah, the two small grants that were for the historic preservation of historic North Hampton. So, any, actually, was there a motion?
Yes.
And then the motion, okay. Any discussion on these items? Roll call, please.
Counsel Bidwell.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Scherer.
Yes.
Okay, that, those pass them first reading. Next up, item 16.186. This is an order to authorize the budgetary transfers into workers' comp insurance.
Point of order.
Yes.
Did we skip 16.177? That's the general one, to approve request for transfer.
Uh, on the agenda, that comes up, where did it go?
It's after.
Oh, it's after.
So, so just, just so you know, when I organize the agenda, it's always first reading items only, and then the request for two readings, and then second readings.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's.
Without regard to their order number.
Without regard to their order number. So that's why they fall out of sequence with.
Oh, I thought the fact that the two were nested under another one, I thought the first one was this, so my mistake. Thank you.
So back to item 16.186, I have a motion, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion on the budgetary transfers into workers' comp insurance. Roll call, please.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Scherer.
Yes.
Counsel Bidwell.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes in first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Scherer.
Yes.
Counsel.
Two readings, isn't it?
Second.
Yes.
No, I, yeah. Counsel Bidwell.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes in first reading.
Suspender.
Second.
Any further discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'll accept a motion for second reading.
Let your proof.
Second.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call?
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Scherer.
Yes.
Counsel Bidwell.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Uh, passes in two readings. Item 16.148, this is the second reading, this is an order to approve the FY 2017 residential factor and tax levy percentages.
Your proof.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on this? I'm going to take this opportunity, we, we have a reporter here tonight, so we just want to comment on the fact that during the course of the last meeting, we had actually consensus and agreement from people testifying and people also here debating of the value of maintaining a factor of one, which means essentially residential taxes, the tax rate is identical to commercial tax rate. In, the value that we identified is principally that we have a much lower commercial tax rate in Northampton than a lot of surrounding areas that do, that have a split rate, a split factor, which allows for communities to tax at a greater level commercial properties. And as such, we've, we've seen that it actually has an adverse impact on, on businesses, on ability to develop businesses. Now, I also commented somewhat petulantly, and I'll probably reiterate it, that, that this community, and particularly the, the government of this community, is taking a lot of knocks for being not particularly business-friendly. And I always kind of mildly resent this because we never, no one gives, we never get credit for the fact that actually, the community is committed to maintaining a low commercial tax rate in order to maintain commercial ventures in this, in town. You know, when, back in the day, when I used to hear from some business, like, what has Northampton done for me lately, I would point out, this is kind of one of the big things that we do, and it's taken for granted. And I just wanted to emphasize that it shouldn't be taken for granted. It is, we're all committed to this, but the fact is, is that we do this understanding that, that it doesn't come without some pressures. But it does, the value far outweighs the pressures in this respect. And, and I hope that, it is my hope that commercial property owners might feel that this is, and recognize this as a gesture of goodwill and hope and faith in their investment in the community, and hope it translates as a, as a good thing. So, you know, that's my, that's my little mini rant. Any other discussion on this point? Counselor Bidwell?
I'll, I'll make an observation to your little soapbox there. And, and that is that, yes, it's, 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 it's an incredibly significant factor in retaining businesses and attracting businesses and, and building up our tax base. But as, as proud as we should be of ourselves or of doing it, let's not let ourselves off the hook for looking for other ways that we can be responsive to the needs of the business community. We haven't, we haven't ended our job there. It's a tremendous starting point, but there's more to be done.
Noted. And, and I would add to that, that we have not done that. In fact, actually, we endeavor to strive even further. It's just picking up the sad credit that, the small monochrome of credit that hope that would get due and realize, and, and I, it's an expression of faith in the, in the commercial dimension of the, of the community and that we are still committed to preserving and expanding and improving the lot. But at the same time, this is, this is kind of an essential, basic commitment that often is taken for granted. And that's, so, yeah, I take your point. And Counselor Murphy?
And, and I don't want people, you know, watching at home to think, oh, my goodness, you know, we're in the tank for the commercial property users. But the fact remains, our residential property base costs us money. Those, those are the people we provide service. Our commercial property base doesn't cost us as much to maintain. So the larger our commercial base and the more we nurture that, the more tax money we have to spend on the needs of our residents. You know, you know, our most expensive service is schools. Commercial properties don't generate kids in school. So the money that the commercial base generates, we spend on the residential base. So, you know, the reason we want to grow our commercial is because they generate money that we spend on our residents and their children. So that's why we're in favor trying to nurture that, because the money that they generate in taxes, we spend on the residents. And that's the reason that we're trying to grow that base, so we have more money to spend on people and their kids and the quality of life in our community. It's not, it's not to help out the businesses, it's to use their taxes to help out the people that live here and their kids and the services we provide to them. And that's important to notice. You know, when we talk about it, we want those dollars to help the people that call us home, and that's why it's important to keep that in mind.
Anyone else on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
That passes in two readings. Item sixteen point one eight nine, also request for two
readings. This is financial order to give fund expenditure at the senior center for a computer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Passes in first reading. There's a motion made to suspend rules. There's a second,
seconded. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion's made for second reading. This is second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
That passes in two readings. Item sixteen point one eight nine, also request for two
readings. This is financial order to give fund expenditure at the senior center for a computer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Suspend rule fourteen.
Second.
Okay, passes in first reading. Motion's made to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to approve.
Okay, the motion's made in second. For second reading and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, now we come up to the item that we made poor man sit here for the whole
time. This is, in order, this is item sixteen point one eight five. This is an order to suspend parking fees for certain dates. No, that's not the one anyway. I'm sorry, Amanda. In, in 2016. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to note that the Transportation and Parking Commission reviewed this and gave it a unanimous positive recommendation. I'm not sure if the code of ordinances currently requires us to do that or not, but just duly noting that they just looked at it.
It's to that effect, actually, yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Suspend rule fourteen.
Second.
Okay, passes in first reading. Motion's made to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Second reading will be in our first meeting in November. Now, under ordinances, here we go. It's the proposal to amend parking regulations on Main Street and Old South Street. No, here we don't go. Yes, well, we do go. An old, old South Street parking lot with an explanation from Mayor Norwood's. That's actually listed in the title. The motion's made and seconded. That's not a, that's not a motion yet on that. Do you, do you want to address this rather than me read your letter?
Sure.
If you want, I mean...
You were talking about the old South Street one.
This is the old South Street parking lot.
It's a super title for all three of those.
For all three of the upcoming...
Yes, they're all part of a sort of the same set.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure, fine.
You don't, you don't have to, Counselor O'Donnell?
Can I make a motion to take them as a group since they sort of come together?
Second. Okay, so, okay, so to put it on the floor. Very good, okay.
So, as I, as I did say in the memo that I submitted to you, these are the first of several changes that I'll be submitting over the next several months as part of implementing several of the recommendations of our downtown Northampton parking management study that was prepared by walking, Walker Parking Consultants. These, these ordinances combine specifically to implement the recommendation that the on-street parking along Main Street, sort of two changes, that we extend that, that Main Street downtown parking to one hour to two hours, and then the recommendation that the hourly fee, which is currently seventy five cents an hour, be increased to one dollar per hour. The, the old South Street reference is to align that, there's a small section of one-hour parking there, that would increase that to two-hour parking as well, just to align it with, with Main Street. So, you know, again, essentially, as the, as the, as the study showed, this is one part of our parking system where there is not adequate turnover and where, you know, the folks who are out there observed, you know, people, it's called cruising for parking, you know, making laps for parking. And one of the pieces that they noted was that, you know, it's, it's our most prime parking. Obviously, judging by the number of people who want it, it's the most convenient to businesses on Main Street, but that we're not really pricing it that way, that it's priced comparably to parking, you know, adjacent side streets. So part of the effort is to, to set the parking rate such that it will, you know, may, may make folks who make economic decisions about parking decide, I'm going to park, you know, somewhere else I can park, you know, one street back for seventy-five cents an hour. The further back I go, fifty cents, twenty-five cents, I can park in the garage for the first hour free. So that was the recommendation. And then the two hours, which is something that we've heard, we heard, I've heard a lot from, from business owners downtown. It also came out at the public meetings that we held, that Walker Parking held, just the idea that one hour does kind of, is kind of a tight timeframe for someone who wants to come and, you know, have an appointment or go have lunch or do multiple errands downtown. So, so this kind of does two different things. So that's the, that's what's coming forward. As I noted in the memo, we are going to be bringing forward in January some of the other recommendations that are kind of tied to technology and some of the technology changes. So we are making these, these ones first on Main Street primarily, because I want to get them in place in time for the holiday shopping season, for Bag Day. And, and so we're going to make these. These are relatively straightforward. We would be just reprogramming the meters, which is not a big deal, and temporarily reprogramming the chip in the kiosks on Main Street to extend them to two hours, and obviously changing the time limit moving forward. Really excited about the technology that we'll be deploying around all of our kiosks. And then what I plan to do is come forward with some of the other changes that were recommended, primarily, you know, our Masonic Street Lot behind Main Street. It's often referred to as the Armory Street Lot, or, or, yeah, the Armory Street Lot, and making that, extending that from two hours to three hours. So, again, trying to create different time zones, different parking zones at different price points to make it more convenient for people, and also, you know, stratify the rates properly, and also, you know, someone who wants more than two hours has a really nearby option to do that. So, so those will be coming forward later, but this, these are ones we wanted to get done before, before Bag Day and in time for the holiday season.
What's the Counselor's pleasure? I can read the ordinances as, as they are, and, or would you prefer to discuss them now or ask questions of the mayor now before I read the ordinances? No preference? May, if you have questions for the mayor, now would seem an appropriate time to ask them and share them with us. Counselor Bidwell?
I noticed that the, one of the recommendations of the study that you're not acting on now is the extension of metered time till eight o'clock. And I, I get the pros and cons of that. Do you, do you see a, a time down, down the road where it might make sense to, to, to add that metered time in?
Well, one of the things that I, that I, I understand it from a policy perspective, but one of the things that they, in their recommendation, they were only making that recommendation for Main Street. So, the recommendation was, the three things they said we should do on Main Street, go to two hours, go to dollar, and then change the time to, to extend Main Street later. I think the idea was to, you know, to try to, you know, create a little bit more parking management into the, closer to the dinner hour and into the dinner hour, so people who are coming downstairs, downtown for the, you know, more of the nighttime economy, it might help there. The problem is, A, I talked to a lot of business owners downtown, and they, they, that wasn't a concern for them, and they, they weren't really keen on it. The other thing is I thought it would be really confusing to, you know, park on Masonic Street or Center Street and, you know, one night, and your meter only lasts till six, and then you park right around the corner on Main Street, and, you know, suddenly you come out and you've got a ticket, and wait a minute, and, but, so, it would be kind of confusing, I think, for people. I think, I know some communities, like Amherst, for example, I think they're, they have a lot, one particular lot on the common that they have extended time on, as opposed to... So, I think if we're going to have a conversation about it, I've wanted, I'd want to do it more holistically, and I think it would be something to consider for the entire central business. But at this point, I kind of want to see how these incremental changes we make work, and again, based on the feedback I got from business owners and just the concern about how you would, we're already challenged with trying to inform people about how our parking system works, and that's a separate project we're working on, but this would be challenging as well, so, yeah.
Other questions or comments?
I would have a comment, I have a question. My comment is just to express support for this proposal. The Transportation Parking Commission, again, reviewed this and gave it a positive recommendation unanimously. And I guess what I would just observe today is that these ordinances aren't in vacuum, they're in, they're, they come in parallel to a study for, for new signage in the city, for wayfinding, and they come after a comprehensive study of downtown parking in the city. And I guess I just think that it's important to remember that it's part of a holistic plan that the mayor and now the city council is going to pursue step by step. And I think our downtown is important to be thoughtful about and not take for granted, and I actually appreciate that we are seeking opportunities to strengthen our parking system, and we're doing it in a way that's not just rushing, as some communities do, to say, well, let's build an entirely new parking structure somewhere. This is actually thinking about our parking system in a way to increase turnover in, in the busiest part of downtown, in a way that I think is, is beneficial for that downtown. So, for those reasons, I'm, I'm happy to support it.
Definitely, yeah. I thank you, thank you, Counselor, for those comments. And it's also part of larger efforts that we're doing around sustainability to try to encourage more people not to drive downtown, you know, but to walk downtown, or to bike downtown, and the work that we're doing around complete streets and improvements to Main Street, they're all part of that larger picture of, of making downtown easier to, to get to and to get around safely, so.
Comments or questions? I, I, you know, and when I actually posted an article published on Facebook, I got a lot of community feedback. It's interesting, I, was there any public comment relative to this in transportation parking?
There was not, actually.
There's none here today. That doesn't mean there's certainly, there's certainly people who have opinions. The, the opinion that was frequently shared, and, and I think it's based on the misconception that the idea is to generate money. This, this is essentially a, an end-run taxation system that's designed to generate, basically, as you describe it, it's a little weird, I suppose. It's social, it's social engineering in some way. It's, it's trying to condition people to, to make choices that, that, based on economic decisions, as opposed to being 15 feet closer than they thought they would have been otherwise to a place that they were trying to get to. And it does, I mean, it's why we have metered parking to begin with. This is not, it wasn't designed to make money where we couldn't make money before. It was actually designed to create a turnover and parking inventory, so you didn't have people, I mean, once upon a time, Northampton's, it wasn't that long ago, our tickets were $5. And you would find people saying, well, $5, I can park downtown all day for $5, I'll eat that ticket. And we realized, as a social engineering experiment, that was not a particularly good one. It wasn't, it didn't work. But the pushback was principally against the quarter increase in, per hour, and unfortunately, they only read the headlines, which tends to be the case in Facebook, so they didn't realize it was just for Main Street, and you were, and we were expanding the time to two hours on Main Street. So, the, the other thing is, is that we noticed as the economy, as the retail economy changes, that once upon a time, maybe, I remember businesses originally asked for an hour. They wanted a quicker turnover. They were mostly businesses that were walk-in, walk-out type of businesses, not so much focused on the restaurants and bars, which clearly, if you're going to go grab a meal, an hour makes for a pretty rushed meal in some cases, so. So, as the trend changes, the needs in the, in change, and we're, we're actually displaying some adaptability here, some flexibility relative to, to the conditions as they change. And so, yeah, it wa, it wasn't really a question, it was just, it was, I'm giving you some of the feedback, which I think you probably witnessed on my Facebook page.
I think the other key, I mean, I think the key thing is that most people, you know, you know, I've never heard somebody say to me, I didn't go there because the parking was too expensive, it was because I couldn't find a parking space. And so, so most people I've talked to, when I explain to them that, yeah, it's going to be an extra quarter, but it's going to be two hours, you know, that they, two hours is really, that's what they focus on. Most of the business owners are, that's the thing that they're really excited about, is the two hours. They're not really sure that the, they don't think the 25 cents is going to be a major deterrent, because again, people will, you know, go to any sporting event, go to any place, and, you know, the closer you get to the stadium, the parking gets more and more expensive, but there are people who are willing to pay, you know, the most expense, expensive parking to park as close to where they want to be, and that's just human nature, so.
But also, the intent is certainly not to go up to their threshold of pain where no one parks at all, that's...
This is true. You're trying to create so much, you know, 80 to, you know, 80% turnover, 85% turnover, and what they were finding was that we weren't, we weren't seeing that. And there was a lot of people that were moving their cars around on Main Street, and, and they're just, that was the place that, and especially at a time when we had lots of vacancies, you know, one block over, like, tons, you know, you know, nobody's, people are cruising for parking on Main Street, and, you know, but there's plenty of parking in the Armory Street Lot or the Masonic Street Lot. So, we're trying to make sure that we, that we price our system correctly, so that people will be more incentivized to, to park.
As Counselor O'Donnell pointed out, the wayfaring signs should go a long way towards forming the public.
That committee is being actively with a consultant we hired to work on better signage for our parking to go along with the new improvements we're making in technology.
Counselor LeBarge and Counselor Shara?
Mayor, when you say that you were talking to the merchants, did you actually go to the merchants?
I did. I, I was out chatting with various merchants all around downtown to, to get their feedback on it. And I know the two hours is a, is one that a lot of people liked, and I talked a lot about the six o'clock versus eight o'clock. And, and, you know, there's, not just looking at the, from a parking perspective, but, you know, some people have said over time, well, why does the downtown retailers, customers have to pay for parking, but the evening, custom, you know, businesses, their customers don't? I didn't get any sense of that for any, anyone. I think that they, they, that wasn't really, that didn't come through in any of the conversations I had, that it's like a daytime versus nighttime thing. So, yeah, I think, I think...
I should think that I would be very happy with that, because that way it gives more time for people to shop down here.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. And the first hour is still free in the garage, so.
Exactly.
Convenient to Main Street. So, if you need more, you can't get a ticket in the garage, which is the other thing. You can park as long as you, as long as you want.
50 cents for two hours, the first two hours. Counselor Shara?
Since we're rehashing public comment we saw on social media, since we haven't had any public comment here, and I'll also note, we didn't at Legislative Matters either on this, I'll just note something that I said on Facebook that multiple people have told me they didn't know, just as a point of information, although at this point, I'm not sure who can hear us or in what way, maybe Amanda will pick this up, that people were concerned that the rate raise would hurt people who have disabilities. And so, I noted that Mass General Law says that you can park with, as long as you have a handicap placard, you can park anywhere, it doesn't have to be a handicap spot, and you never need to feed the meter or the kiosk or anything. And many people said they didn't know that. So, I just thought I would reiterate that, because I got a lot of feedback that people weren't aware of that. And so, this, this rate raise does not affect people who are...
That's correct. If you have a, a legal handicap placard, you can park at any of our on-street parking or off-street parking. Yeah, that's correct.
Counselor, also, if they look at their ADA laws, it actually states that.
I don't doubt it. I mean, I do know that, but people weren't aware, so. Part of our job is to inform people of things.
Any other comments or questions relative to this? So, now I'm going to get into the prosaic part of reading you these things here, so. This is, excuse me, 16.164. This is to amend Chapter 31236 of the Code Book by modifying parking meter fees in Class 1A and Class 1C into a class, add a class 1F, and be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton as follows. Section 1, that subsection, Chapter 312 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts shall be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Class 1A and 1C go from one hour to two hours, and the fee would increase from 75 cents per hour to a dollar per hour on 1A, and 1C would increase from 15 cents to 25 cents per hour. Add also Class 1F with a time limit of three hours at 75 cents per hour. Did we, and, these are already moved as a group, so we'll take them as a group, so that's the first item. Next item, okay. This is to amend Chapter 312-109 of the Code Book to modify the time limits in Class 1A and 1B, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton as follows. Section 1, that subsection, Chapter 312 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Modify Bridge Street Northwest, on the, on the northwest side, from Main Street to Market Street, will change from one hour to two hours as a Class 1A category. Crafts Avenue, on the west side, the entire length unless otherwise specified, will also increase to two hours. Main Street, both sides, entire length unless otherwise specified, will also increase to two hours from one hour. Main Street Northwest, .50 feet northeasterly from King Street to a .315 feet northeasterly will increase from one hour to two hours. Main Street on southeast side, .73 feet north of the easterly, 73 feet northeasterly from Pleasant Street to .30 feet southerly from Strong Avenue will also increase to two hours from one hour. Main Street, the south side, 186 feet easterly from the New South Street to 83 feet westerly from Crafts Avenue, also increasing to two hours from one hour. And then Merrick Lane, the south side, the entire length unless, unless otherwise specified, will be two hours. It was originally one hour, Class 1A, it would be changed to two hours, Class 1B. And then finally, this is an ordinance to amend Chapter 312-110 of the Code Book to modify the time limit in Old South Street parking lot as described, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton as follows. It's Section 1, that subsection, Chapter 312 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended, it's, so that such section shall read, read as follows. Section, that, section, subsection 312-110, Schedule 9, off-street parking areas, and the parking area location is Old South Street. The what? The Synconifly Lot? Never heard of that. Is that, okay, the Synconifly Lot, easterly side, in the old South Street and southerly side of the old railroad bed, and the number of spaces, 21 spaces in front of the Maplewood Chords. And the time limit now is one hour, it would be increased to two hours as Class 1C. Synconifly, okay. All right, that's the, that are, those, them are, that, those are the three ordinances that are being considered as a group. Any, any discussion? Counselor O'Donnell?
Just on the middle one, 16.165.
Yeah.
This is probably something, too, have been discussed in committee, but I'm just sort of realizing it now, and so therefore, it might be something to talk about on second reading. You know, the third row says Main Street, both entire length, and then the next three rows are subsections of Main Street, so I'm not sure, you know, why we need the, those three rows if, the one right above the three is saying all of Main Street, so. Maybe I'll flag that and look, unless there's an answer that we know.
I think that was the format it was in before.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if it's intended to account for gap. It says entire length unless otherwise specified, because then we do have gaps in Main Street, like, there's no parking in front of Plasky Park.
Right, you have 15 minutes space or something.
Exactly. So, I think that must be...
So, that one's fine.
That was the format that it was in, so we just kind of use that same format, so.
Okay.
So, I guess the, I guess it's unless otherwise specified, and then below, we're specifying a few different sections.
But, but for the same, exact same parking rules, so.
You're right, yeah.
Can I request for the second reading, maybe a map, an illustrative map, that would, would show where the, where...
We can look at that language, it may just be superfluous.
Right.
Thank you. We could just strike the entire length and just go with sections that we...
Seeing there's superfluous language in, in any of our codes and ordinances?
No.
All right, well, but anyway, maybe a graphic illustration might help, they say.
Like lawyers do, but, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm happy to look into that, though, between now.
Thank you, that's a great answer.
Or a discussion on this side, on these items. No? Okay, this is in first reading. Roll call, please, for all three items.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. There'll be an opportunity for the public to weigh in and discuss at our next meeting, where we'll have a second reading on this item. Item 16.172, this is an ordinance to amend the list of enforcing officers and penalties for non-criminal disposition from Chapter 40-5 of the Code Book. Here we go. This is, this is a request upon the recommendation of the mayor, to essentially change, oh, okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Northampton, providing that the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton be amended by revising subsection, Chapter 40-5 of said code, providing that the listing enforcing officers and penalties for non-criminal disposition be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton. It is, the enforcing officer, police can impose a $20 fine, and perhaps the mayor would want to speak to this and say...
Yes, or the...
Oh, well, okay. Actually, I'll accept a motion first.
No move.
Second.
Okay. Do you want, Counselor O'Donnell, you want to speak to this?
I mean, I just understand this whole section to be about what you can't do on sidewalks, you can't ride a skateboard, you can't throw snowballs, you have stuff like that.
You have a section of the ordinance right now that has, you're not allowed to do certain things on Main Street, but then there's no actual penalty, there's no actual ticket or penalty attached. So, we've gotten reports of these kinds of issues, and, you know, it's sort of like the stern warning from Officer so-and-so or something is about all of that, I think. So, there, I think that the, the police were just saying that, yeah, there's this section of the Code, but there's no actual, most of our sections have, you know, an enforcement section, and then there's actually a penalty section that says what's the enforcement mechanism. So, this is a $20 ticket.
And, and this is in, now, there's a prescribed district for where skateboards and other...
That's correct.
Wheels, devices are not allowed on sidewalks.
That is correction.
With excluding, excluding wheelchairs and strollers and...
Yep, and we had a, kind of a spate of folks biking.
Right.
Zipping around, you know, people coming out of stores and almost hitting folks and getting hit, that kind of thing. And so, it's something we've been mindful of, but the police let us know that when they looked at this, that there wasn't actually an accompanying, you know, section in the, in the list of penalties for non-criminal...
In the past, the police used to confiscate a skateboard, which now it seems that was illegal, that since there was no, there was no enforcement, and they...
I was wondering about all those skateboards.
Yeah. Confiscated skateboards, which actually promote, prompted the whole discussion about where would...
That's correct.
...create a greater allowance of skateboard use, and also contributed to the development of the skate park.
That is correct.
Because the police, and no one ever called them on it or called us on it, the fact that they were doing the legal confiscations of property.
Oh.
They confiscated, in fact, one child of a preeminent attorney. I'm surprised they didn't catch that, okay. Counselor Klein, you had a question?
This is an interesting ordinance to me because something recently came up in Word 7 that is not enforceable.
Exactly.
By the police, and so I'm wondering, I mean, we have one particular violation, as it were, that's being referenced here, when there are all kinds of things in our Code of Ordinances that are not, we're not able to address using the police. So, I'm wondering if there's some, if there's some movement with this one to kind of go through the ordinances and really figure out where we have a similar issue, so that we can make sure that the police, in fact, are able to enforce all of our ordinances. we can make sure that the police, in fact, are able to enforce all of our ordinances.
I, I understand what you're talking about, and I know the situation you're talking about. I, I think the one you're talking about is unique, because that's a, it's a, typically it would be a second-hand license that someone needs to apply for, and in this case, someone was operating without that. So I know we were scratching our heads trying to figure that, that in the absence of a license, who would be the, who would enforce? Because it's actually a license you issue, the City Council issues, and there's no, there's nothing in the ordinance specifying what the penalty is for not having that license. So we are trying, I know the city solicitor's been communicating with that particular person, but we do find these little gaps, so that is something we're looking at, trying to figure that out, to bring them into compliance. But we, we do always have the mechanism of, in that case, where someone's operating without a license, of going to court, you know, you know, summonzing them to court, and I think that's, would probably be the next step as that moves along. I don't, I haven't gotten an update on that particular situation, but...
It's all set and taken care of, just using that as an example.
No doubt about it.
Another piece, and so I'm just, I'm wondering if as counsel, perhaps the legislative committee, ledge committee could do some kind of update and look through ordinance and see if you don't have the enforcement mechanism.
We've got a lot of ordinance reviews relative to the charter, and I, we still keep finding little things that slipped us the first time, so this is the kind of thing that we need to try to identify. And sometimes we don't know them until a situation arises. So, but yeah, but definitely, the, the holiday parking was another one that we discovered probably should have been addressed when the charter change happened, so there's some stuff in there to deal with, so.
Counselor LeBard, and then Counselor O'Donnell.
Counselor Klein, I thank you for that recommendation, because I think, Mayor, you know, also, we're having a problem in Ward 6, and, and it's the language, which the police department cannot do anything because of one word, unreasonable noise, a noise ordinance, okay? How? Do you actually, go ahead and find somebody when you say unreasonable? I could be looking at something and say, oh, that's a loud noise, and you're saying, oh, no, it's not. So I agree with her. I think some of these ordinances need to be looked at very, very carefully, because the police department already said, because of just that language, they can't do anything.
Counselor O'Donnell.
I'm just, I'm going to withdraw. I think I might be encouraging us to go too far afield if I ask.
Right.
We should stick to the...
Yeah, to stay, stay on this one item, but, but it, it was helpful.
It was interesting, though.
It was helpful for clarification as to what the issue was. Okay. Any other discussion or comments on this ordinance, which is essentially empowering the police to issue a fine for the violation of the sidewalk restrictions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Passes in first reading. Our last item is 16.182, an ordinance regarding no parking at certain times in the roundhouse lot, and this is to refer to the unlegislative matters. Is there a motion to refer?
No.
Okay. Discussion on the referral?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, what time is it? Oh, no donuts.
No donuts.
All right. I have no updates, and there's no information request, and no new business, so the next thing is...
Move to adjourn.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.